Please rise for the pledge. We have all members of the board are present this evening. Before we move forward with the approval of the agenda, are there any announcements?
I'd just like to mention that I really enjoyed seeing Frozen Junior at the Mizzou musical over the weekend and it was over a hundred students just onstage and many more, you know, tech and support roles, so congratulations to everyone.
Very nice. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. With that, could I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. In our packet, we have meeting minutes from the public meeting and executive session on January thirteenth. If there are no questions or corrections, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. We have no correspondence of notes at this time. That brings us to our first public comment session for this evening, first of two. If you have anything that you'd like to add, if you could approach the microphone, if you could stand up or if you want to speak up, one or the other, maybe you can get them.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sharon Whitaker. I'm a forty-six-year taxpayer of Clarence Central Schools. My children went to school from kindergarten through high school, and they're both in education today. I'm here because I worked for thirty years for Erie One BOSI's and ten years as a bus attendant for Clarence, and I retired last June. I put my name on the sub list as a substitute teacher aide. I know my job. I know how to do my job. I am a certified job coach from U B. BOSI sent me to school to be the job coach. I worked for eleven years at Hardness. I worked eight days as a sub, and now they're taking me off the list, and they will not tell me why, other than Mr. Crouch said something to me twice in the two days I was there. I have recently just got $6,000 worth of hearing aids in the last two weeks. So if I missed something, it was because I was, did not know that I was hearing impaired. And then I worked in kindergarten and was told, not told to me, but told to one of you that I had a gruff voice. Well, that is so not true. I've worked with kids from big to little. I worked at, I don't know if you're familiar with Dexter Terrace? Do you remember Dexter Terrace? Yeah. Well, I worked at Dexter Terrace, and I almost got killed at Dexter Terrace by a twenty-ounce water bottle thrown and grazed my face, and I had a nervous breakdown and left BOSI's. Now I'm having a nervous breakdown practically from being terminated for two things that I was told wrong and the other, I don't know what I did wrong. I've been in every school, the junior high, the high school twice, ledge view three times, loved it. I've been at all of the schools, Clarence Center, all of them, and I loved my job. I went home happy as could be. I don't want to do it every day, but I want a sub, and they said they're taking me off the list, and I feel that I've been treated unfairly, and if the teacher or anybody had anything to, nobody, nobody told me, "You're doing something wrong," or "You're not doing something." I did what I have been doing for forty years, and on the bus, I ride the little bus, so you know I, I am well versed with special needs children, and I loved it. I loved every eight days, and nobody will tell me why they took me off. I want to be a teacher aide for my district Clarence, where I've paid forty-six years worth of taxes. And Clarence also, when my children attended here, they didn't, they had regular Regents diplomas, you remember that. They were told, because they were regular students, not Regents students, they were going to amount to nothing. That came from the guidance counselors here at Clarence. They're now long gone. My kids have been, my baby's eighteen, seventeen years. My daughter has her master's in administration, so for two kids that didn't get a Regents degree, I think they did pretty well. She didn't get a certificate in administration, she got her master's. She won't use it because she loves her job. She says, "I have this much stress." I bet you Mr. Hicks, Dr. Hicks can't say he has this much stress in his job.
Pretty close.
And, well, good, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. So anyway, that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here to plead for a second chance, to prove that I can be a good aide for Clarence School District. I don't want to go to Williamsville or Lancaster. This is my district, forty-six years, and I'll die in this district because I have all my own home, so.
Ms. Whitaker, we'll give you a call and we'll sit down and meet with you. We will give you a call and we will sit down and meet with you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything at this time? Again, we have a second session later in the evening. Okay. All right. Moving forward, no one finished business at this time, so I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hicks, for the superintendent's report.
Tonight, we have Mary Sorrels, an English teacher in our high school, and Dawn Kinney of the youth board, and all of our students who are involved in youth court, and they have a presentation for the Board of Ed on exactly what is going on, so, Mary, you can use that.
Excuse me, I'm on the.
Yes.
Is that for me?
Yes, we will give you a call.
You will get in touch with me?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary, you can, you can use that one, and I'll give us one of the kids that.
And they were going to stand up in a dress. We had some choreography. Sometimes our choreography changes if we move, but generally, we meet at the town, the town hall. You can see the picture. We meet where Judge Powers and the other justices used to meet, so we can, the kids really have it all prepared for you, but Mrs. Kinney is going to start because she knows the history of a program we're very proud of.
Thank you, Board of Education, for having us here tonight, and our students, sorry, losing my voice, our students from the youth court who we're very proud of and will be presenting in just a few minutes. I just want to take a few minutes just to briefly go over the history of youth court. In 2013, Judge Mike Powers from the town approached me and wanted me to work with him to get the youth court started, and it's something he had a love for and a desire to do for many, many years. We went and visited Amherst Youth Court, we went and visited Lancaster Youth Court. There's many youth courts around in the other municipalities that we were able to view and sit in and watch and listen, so we learned a lot from them. We had a very large meeting, Dr. Hicks was there, many of you were there with the state police, with the Erie County sheriffs, because that is their police force here in the town, and they were all gung ho for it, they bought into it right away. There was some paperwork that had to be done on their end, so it took a little while for referrals to come in through both of those police forces, but then we, you know, absolutely collaborated with the school district to get this thing started, and we appreciate the support that you have given us. Krista Ulrich, who is now retired from the district, as you remember, she started with us with youth court, and that collaboration and that partnership between the town and the school district has just been wonderful and really the success to this program. Mary Sorrels took over after Mrs. Ulrich left, and our working relationship has been wonderful. Mary brings with her such a wonderful background of not only teaching, but court background, law background, and has been able to bring that to our students and the court process, the court etiquette. It's just been a wonderful partnership for us to work together on this. And what else can I tell you? So we've been in, going for seven years, almost seven years now, and we average about thirty cases a year, so we've had our work cut out for us, we've enjoyed it immensely, and we look forward to continuing to work with many students here in the Clarence High School, and also Williamsville East. We have a couple students from that school too who are town residents. That's it. We're going to move ahead with our students.
Okay, so the way we thought this would work best is a couple members of the, of the youth court will give you an overview, and if you have questions about that part of the process, you could ask those members, and then we'll move forward knowing you have a heavy agenda this evening.
Okay. Hi, everyone. My name's Emily McEntiree. I'm in twelfth grade. I've been doing youth court for two years. I'm also part of the mock trial team.
Hannah Miller. I'm in eleventh grade, and I've been doing this since my freshman year. I'm going to talk a little bit about youth court participation. So one of the first things we do is we do six hours of training in the summer. We break it up into two days, and essentially, we work together to sort of learn the rules and etiquette of court. We also, we take students from ages thirteen to eighteen, so freshmen through seniors, although we do hear cases that are younger. We all make a one-year commitment, at least, but we find that many of our members come back for more, and we all will sign a pledge of confidentiality so as to ensure that none of the case material goes beyond the walls of the courtroom, as well as we abide by the rules and etiquette for the extracurricular code with Clarence. Etiquette is important as we work to hone the habits of mind and formality required as officers of the court. We always exercise courtesy towards defendants and their families, and we exercise proper professional courtroom procedure, well-honed public speaking skills, posture and elocution in order to, in order to keep the character required of a legal advocate. Youth court members always wear professional dress for the second day of training and all subsequent hearings. Youth court attire includes the following items: dress pants, shirts, ties, appropriate skirts, and closed-toe shoes, and we wear our robes to court. Another part of the etiquette is also facial expressions, so when we have a student in court who's either maybe not as engaged as we'd like them to be, or they're very, they're struggling, maybe crying a little bit, or just they say something almost laughable, it's our job to keep a straight face as to not show any emotion, to either encourage them or make them feel bad about themselves.
My name's Henry Brophy. I've been on the youth court for three years now, and I'm a junior.
I'm Michael Murphy. This is my first year in youth court, and I'm a senior this year.
So the process of youth court really starts when we get the referral, so the referrals can come from the state police, the sheriff department, or just the school itself, and they come, they go to Ms. Kinney and the youth bureau, and.
So in the screening, they ask, I guess, preliminary questions to see if either their offense or their willingness to cooperate is acceptable to be held for the judges here because they don't want, obviously, there's a certain limit to what we can actually deal with, so they want to make sure that we're eligible to do that, and if not, they'll either, they'll send it back to where the referral came from.
So after that, it goes through an intake, so the defendant will go to the youth bureau staff, and it's like kind of an interview for them. It's where they plead that they are guilty, and they tell, they like write down the story of what happened and some information about them.
So then they schedule when the hearing will be. Normally, we have it the first Monday of every month, and on average, there's three to five cases a night, so they, it starts at four, five o'clock, and so it's, each session lasts about half an hour, and so there's, you, well, we can get, talk about this later, but you schedule the hearing, and then you show up on that Monday.
Yep. So to prepare for the hearing, we meet in Ms. Sorrels' room in the morning, mostly on Thursdays, and to start, we see if we know the person. If we know the person, we can recuse ourselves from the case because it can get a little awkward on the podium when you're talking to someone you know, and so you don't have to do the case if you know them. I've recused myself before because I've been in a class with them, or I have mutual friends with them, and yeah, we prepare questions, we prepare what we're going to say and.
And then the actual hearing, as you, when you, when the, when the person comes to the town court, they are met by the defense advocate and then subsequently meet everyone else in the court, which we'll go through later, but that, at the hearing, you decide what their sanctions will be, and then the due dates and everything that needs to be followed.
So after that, the sanctions that we give them are monitored, and as you said, we do give them a due date, and we make sure that they do their punishment before their due date.
And then if they check in with the youth bureau staff, and if they fulfill all their requirements, normally, they, they are able to not have anything on their record, which is kind of the purpose of the youth court, so that they can do, work, work back and give it to the community instead of just having something on their record saying they went, they skipped, they had to stay in school for five days doing nothing, and then if they don't fulfill their requirements, then they go back to the original referral source.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, do you have any questions?
Without giving any personal information, what types of cases do you handle?
Mostly e-cigarette cases. The majority is from e-cigarette use.
There, there's also like behavioral issues and code of conduct mishaps, but they, we will go over the specifics later.
Kind of related, yeah, I think you touched on it, but they have to admit their guilt before going into that process?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, they come in, they come in admitting that they're guilty and that they're willing to cooperate with whatever we say.
And you actually meet at the Clarence Town Court?
Yeah, that's where the.
Any other questions?
Hi, I'm Maggie John Santi. I'm a freshman. This is my first year on youth court. I am also what you would call a legacy. My two older sisters have done it, my sister who graduated this year in the class of 2019, and the one staying next to me.
Hi, my name's Emily John Santi. I'm a junior this year, and I'm also on the mock trial team for our school, and this is my second year doing youth court. I will be talking about the role of the defendant advocate. We are the first person the defendant sees when they walk in. We meet them in the lobby. There's usually one, but there's also a girl who goes to East that sometimes works with me, or the other one, her name is Claudia. We kind of just like give like a rundown of what will happen during the court process, and we walk them in when Mrs. Sorrels tells us it's time. They sit with us, and they sit with us until, I told you, go up to the podium where they're sworn in, and they come back and sit with us while the sanction is being deliberated. We're kind of there for moral support, and it's a little less intimidating as you may know the person, you may have a class like in middle school, and it's just not as intimidating as having it dealt with you. Also, we have a bailiff who, in actual court, would have a gun, but we do not have that, but we do have Michael, who is six foot one, who will be swearing, who will be showing.
Can you give them a bit of your voice, Michael? Come on, ready? All the courts that work here. We wanted to do a full hearing, but we know you're busy, Michael, go ahead.
All rise.
And it gives a formality to the proceedings, and, and usually, it's a closed court, so we can't invite you, but the parents are there and the defendant, and that's when we know we speak on our word for the evening.
Yeah, the siblings are allowed to come, so oftentimes, the defense advocates do end up talking to the kids, and a lot of times, they go to the middle school or elementary school, so it's great for them to see some things they can join in high school and hopefully keep them on a straighter path than their older sibling. I will be talking about the role of judges and chief justice. So as a, as a sophomore last year, I started as a judge, and people like Emily and Michael, who are seniors this year, usually take on the role of chief justice, which is the person who mostly does introductions and is in charge of paperwork, and they usually talk about the grade reports, and they lead the questioning at the beginning. The chief justice also, when we go to deliberate, is often in charge of writing the sanctions and suggesting ideas. With all the other judges, though, we usually have four to five in total on a panel. Once in a while, we'll have maybe like two or three if there's a child who maybe has anxiety, for example, to then as not make them nervous, because it can be a little bit intimidating to have older kids sitting in front of you who, you know, they kind of are determining what happens to you in this situation, and I know that may sound a little bit overzealous, but at the same time, like this is affecting your community and how you're perceived in school. Another thing is that the questions that we usually ask, it's a lining of questions to figure out what our sanction should be, and all justices have a separate amount of questions that they each get to do. It's usually, for example, there'll be like Justice One, they'll have questions about school and education and grades. Justice Two will ask about home life. Justice Three, for example, if this is a vaping case, they'll ask about if there's any family that has any cigarette use in the household, or if they're, how they purchase these types of things. So it's, it's mainly like divided up by kind of topics so that we can get a good lining of how it came to be this way, that this person was involved in such a situation. There's also one other person, the courtroom observer or note taker. They aren't necessarily in the case, but it's actually very helpful. We do not keep the notes, though. They are shredded after the case. We have a designated person who does that, Mrs. Sorrels. There's some great people on it. Our sister Sarah was very notable. She had a great eye to find things. You want to try and find some other questions you can ask to see, to find like root causes, and we do not allow them to say like a yeah or nod. We want to make sure we have firm answers so we know all the facts to provide the proper sanctions. Any questions?
I just wondered, maybe Mrs. Kinney can answer this. Have any students gone on to enter the legal profession after serving on youth court?
Oh, yeah. Our sister Sarah is hoping to go into homeland security at U Albany. She's also in the honors program, and I think she got into some other program. She's really busy there, but she wants to go into homeland security and work with the drug sniffing dogs, and a lot of kids are also on mock trial, as we noted.
And Dennis, my son's a first-year law student, and he was on youth court. And we will say Judge Powers writes a wonderful letter of recommendation for law school.
Interesting, not, not everyone, you know, as hard as they in the court as members are in the, in law, you know, justice, they are on the court if they want to help their fellow students.
I originally joined for that reason also. My sisters are on it. Yeah, but I just really wanted to help other kids because it's hard going throughout middle and high school, like having something on your record and like people feeling a certain way about you, but this gives you like a fresh start, and you can just kind of start over, and we've even, I think you can like join it afterwards if you want, which is always great.
Can you give us some examples of what you do for sanctions?
A most common one is community service. If something happened, like maybe a fight or a verbal altercation, a letter of apology or a formal apology. If a parent is very upset, you do have them give the child the hug, the child is supposed to. We also might have essays based on certain things, like a comment that was inappropriate or something like that. We have, we do have like a dare, the dare program, I think that is for drugs, where you have to go with one of your parents just to go through it. We often do that for like the vaping cases. Yeah, we can send them to Kids Escaping Drug Beans as well. We can, and we can also, if they are struggling in school, we can recommend, but we can't force them to get tutors and accept the extra help that the school offers, especially in the LAC and with the tutoring list and everything that they have here. Any other questions?
Hi, I'm Maggie. I'm a senior, and this is my first year on youth court. I'm also a member of mock trial. I've been on it for four years.
Hello, my name is Emily. Again, for those of you keeping track, there's three on this court right now. It's interesting. Anyway, I have been a member of youth court for two years, and I'm currently a junior.
So some misdemeanors that we deal with are drug possession, fighting, theft, and then harassment, including digital harassment.
We also handle violations of the school code of conduct, such as, or and including status offenses. These are crime, these are limitations put on young people because of our status as minors, things such as smoking and e-cigarette use would qualify as status offenses, as well as possession of alcohol or tobacco. In most cases, our youth court offenders are only allowed to return once. However, if it is two entirely unrelated matters over a long period of time, they may be allowed to return a second time.
So we are a restorative justice model, so if you could speak at this time, we're just going to go down the row, and if, if the board has any further questions. This is about restoring relationships, about our young people feeling that they are stakeholders in the community, and so they're each going to tell you about, not a full case, but something that has impacted them from serving on the court. So why don't you start with you, Emily, just very briefly, and then we'll go around to Ben, who joined us a little later today, but got here, and we're so thrilled that he did. And we have trained twenty-three students for youth court this year.
So restorative justice is, it's a principle, really. Restorative justice means that we don't seek to punish the offender. We seek to restore them to their former standing as a well-doing and responsible person of the community. And honestly, the cases that stick with you the most are probably those of seventh graders, seventh grade kids who have made a terrible mistake, and they regret it, and they're on a path they don't really know how to change, so they come to our court, and they're nervous, or they're, they're nervous, they're crying, they're upset. It's a scary thing. It may not seem so, but when there's five people staring down you, it can be intimidating. So they're upset, and after the process is over, I believe they feel a little relieved that, yes, someone hold their story, and someone does understand that their life at this point may be difficult, maybe impossible, maybe hard, but there are still better options. We provide a source of hope for kids who have made a bad choice, good, good kids who want to do better and want to do well, but something happened and their life got turned into chaos. So restorative justice means allowing them to become who they are supposed to be, who they can be at their full potential.
I think the cases that impact me the most are honestly the ones of people I know in my class, and you may not know really much about them, but you see a different side of them, and you see their vulnerability, and which you don't see a lot of in high schools, so.
I think the cases that affect me most are cases of good kids who have just made bad decisions or hang out with the wrong group of people, and they just kind of made a mistake, and they really kind of want to fix it.
For me, the most affecting cases have been the ones where not only, as, you have to think about their perspective as what, what their situation has been, but then also, in looking as what their situation has been, but then also in looking from their perspective, you can kind of look at your life in your own different perspective because while you're trying to improve their lives, you can also see parts of them in you in reflections and how you can make yourself better, not only them. So I think as much as we're helping them, I think each of us takes something away each night, which is a big part of what the youth court is, I believe.
I would have to agree with Michael on that last part. I think we all do take something home with us every night and I would say that the cases that really impact us the most are those good kids who make that one mistake and we can be there out for them honestly and we can help them sort of get in, back into their community and realize that what they're doing is not okay. And obviously, some of them know, I mean, they come in and their parents are, you can tell they're mad at them and they're nervous, their parents are already mad, their brothers and sisters are watching and they're getting stared at by five high school kids and it's not an easy thing to do. But these kids really, they're strong and we're here to help them, so.
So for me, the cases that really affect me are the ones that I really see like an impact in them after the case. There are some students that will, like will have the case and then they'll just keep doing what they were doing wrong and they'll get caught for it again, but they can't come to us and have that second chance. But I like, I like to see how sometimes you'll see a student in the hallway or something and you can really just notice that they've changed something because of what we did.
I've only been on here for less than one year, but my first case really made an impact on me because his little sister was with him and they actually went to two different schools because of a divorce. And the girl was talking about how she went to the middle school and I obviously just left it as I'm a freshman. I had a great experience, I was in so many clubs. But she was saying how she was having trouble making friends and I told her about all these opportunities and didn't realize how much that it helped until the mom thanked Mrs. Sorrels for it. And Mrs. Sorrels told me because the girl had said how she was really excited to go back to school and try and start a new club and it was already three weeks into school, so she was having trouble already and she's a sixth grader, but I hope that she's doing good now and I hope that she's having a lot of fun at the middle school because it's just great.
The ways I see how youth court impacts the community most is when you see just the kind of impact that it has on a student, how it lowers recidivism. I remember a case of a young man who stole a bicycle and from reading his papers, you wouldn't look at him as a remorseful individual, but talking to him in court and hearing his story firsthand, it gave him a third dimension to his character and it reminds you that these are people that you're helping get ready for a future in society. You watch the impact on their families and you realize how important it is to help them change so they can contribute to society in the future just like we can.
For me personally, I don't have a specific case that I would say really stuck with me. I think all of them do just because you're seeing people that are your own age doing these things and for me, it's kind of like, you know, kind of like a wave of reality because you don't know the full story of someone's life, you don't know what they're going through and sometimes mental health, for example, gets brought into these things and when they say it, it's kind of just a reminder to you that these things are in a way like being like overshadowed by other things in your life and other things in their life. And I would hope that someone is okay with sharing these things with us because we're not here to judge. I know we're called judges, but the thing is, at the end of the day, we're just trying to make improvements for others.
And the cases I love are after we've trained this youth court, usually around December with the note takers. I'm on my legal pad with notes for improvement and when I look down at my legal pad and this beautiful panel has covered every single box, they've checked it. And one time I got very concerned because I had a bunch of things and I'm like, oh, they missed that, they missed that, we'll have to work on that. And the judges went into chambers and we, John and I, don't go into chambers with the judges. And then they came back out and they said, we have some further questions. And then I, they checked all the boxes that were on my legal pad. So that's, those are my favorite cases and they're fabulous young people. So if you have any further questions, I know you have a full evening. So we're going to go do homework now.
Thank you, youth court members, we'll pause here for a second. Okay, great kids. We'll jump right in with our second budget presentation. We have information on the governor's budget and kind of a second draft of where everything stands for us. So we'll really divide this into two parts. First, we'll talk about the executive budget and where things stand at the state level. Then we'll talk about things at the local level. The governor is putting forward 826 million additional dollars towards education in the state. You have in front of you kind of a breakdown of how it comes out. Most of the money is in foundation aid. There's also 200 million dollars that has yet to be allocated, but is targeted for high need districts. We are not a high need district. So this number, 826 million, is a large amount of money, but it is not as large as it has been in previous years, nor is it as large as many groups think it needs to be in order to take schools from one year to the next. So I included an extra graph in here tonight and this just has where the governor's aid to education has come up out since 2014 and this is really the lowest amount since 2014 for that. In foundation aid, the governor makes a proposal to change the existing aid formula. And what he wants to do is consolidate 11 aid categories into straight foundation aid. This is potentially a problem for school districts across the state because these are normally aids that you expend one year and get aid back on the next year. If it wasn't for these expense-driven aids, Clarence would get practically no additional dollars from the New York State Education Department. The aids that the governor wants to consolidate include things like BOSI's, textbook, hardware, software, and others. These are aids that the more you spend, the more you get back and if they were to be consolidated into one category and floated into foundation aid, while this year we would know how much that means, in future years we would not and it could be very problematic. The minimum amount of foundation aid that any district, any of the 700 districts across New York State would get is a quarter of 1% increase and that's what Clarence got. So that equals just under 30, $40,000. There is a targeted high need foundation aid, but we don't qualify. The other thing the governor in his budget has proposed is to cap increases in transportation aid at the level of inflation or the level of inflation plus enrollment growth, whichever one is lower. We transport 5,000 students. They don't all go to school in the six Clarence schools, but if they live within our community, we transport them. Our aid for transportation, Rick, is how many cents on a dollar?
About two out of every three dollars we get back.
Okay, so we get back about two out of every three dollars. Capping transportation aid would be highly problematic for us. The other thing the governor wants to do is establish a new tier for building aid, which would be for projects approved beginning in the 2020, 2021 year. Remember, our project, which was voted on by the community affirmatively, is in the hands of the State Education Department right now, so it would be subject to these particular new rules. This would mean that the promise that we made to the community about no impact on taxes may be different. So some things that we're very concerned about, aside from the grand total amount of dollars. We knew the grand total amount of dollars would be low. The three big things we're concerned about are the consolidation of aids, the change in transportation aid, and the change in building aid.
So just to clarify, it's not when the community approves the project, it's when State Education approves the project. So now we could be at risk?
We could be at risk.
If they actually enact something of this.
And just to confirm, we're at a quarter of 1%, so we're getting $40,000 increase in state aid?
Correct, out of, out of a total state aid package of
26 million.
$26 million. Now, we are getting the expense-driven aid also, Mr. Boeoli. So, you know, in grand total, we have more than just that quarter. Foundation aid is a quarter of 1%, right. Okay, some other things about the executive budget. First off, the governor is also proposing a shift for special education costs. This is only referring to students who are in a residential setting with room and board. Normally, the state pays for a higher portion of it. They would shift almost 20% of those costs back to the district. Statewide, that would be a $25 million loss. We don't have many students who are in residential placements, but the ones that we do have are very high cost and we count on this reimbursement. Second thing for STAR eligibility, the governor would like to reduce the income eligibility from $250,000 to $200,000. So this is normal, that would normally be thought of as a good thing. But the governor wants those people, in order to get that credit, to shift them into an income tax credit program rather than the regular STAR that they're in right now. And normally, that requires people to make amendments to their STAR prior to the time that they would vote on the school budget. It becomes confusing and difficult for us to explain to the community members. It actually results in a reduction of STAR. The governor also puts in $51 million for new initiatives, things that he's had in there before and a 5.3% increase for New York City Charter Schools in their reimbursement. So a couple more things, a couple of additional things on the executive budget. The total school aid would be 826 million, but 85% of that would go to high need schools. So there are categories of schools in New York State from high need, which need the most assistance, to low need, which have the highest income and property wealth. Clarence is on the low end need of the spectrum. Last year, the governor estimated that it would cost $1.1 billion in school aid just to transfer from one year to the next. So he's a little lower than that in his initial proposal. And the Board of Regents was suggesting that it would be $2 billion to go from one year to the next without any reductions. So he's far off of what the Board of Regents recommended. The impacts we've talked about, it would be extraordinarily difficult if expense-based aids were eliminated in the budget. And that will be our big lobbying point for our legislators. We, we don't anticipate getting a lot more money from the state, but getting rid of some of the ideas about changes in state aid formulas are something that we're going to advocate for. Okay, so for us, for Clarence, where do we stand now that we know what the governor's number is? Remember, the process works in a linear fashion. The governor produces his budget. A couple of weeks from now, the Assembly will produce a budget, the Senate will produce a budget. They're called one-house budgets. Then the governor, the leaders from the Assembly and the leaders from the Senate will sit in a room and hammer out the grand bargain of what the whole state aid picture will be like this year in the budget. Usually, that happens by April 1st. And for us to be able to count on a number to put into our budget, it would have to happen by April 1st. Right now, we have plugged in the numbers from the governor's budget. That's our tradition and that is a conservative way for us to go. So overall, our budget philosophy hasn't changed. We would like to sustain and enhance the core programs of the district and we want to exhibit fiscal responsibility with people's tax dollars. So for us, that's where things go. As far as our guidelines and that the board has provided to us and we have spoke to you about, we want to try to maintain or improve our existing programs and we do not want to make reductions to staff. And we have a draft of the budget here that does that and we will stay within the tax cap number to do that. The fiscal reality really is this. The capped tax levy alone will not give us enough funds to maintain our existing programs. The governor's budget doesn't give us enough state aid to balance our programs. So what do we need to do? We need to use some reserves and some non-personnel expense reductions in order to close our budget gap. So the summary that we're going to give you in this second budget draft has those, the utilization of additional reserves and some reductions in non-personnel expense spendings in it. We have gotten a little bit of good news as we've gone along, okay? This is just a one through nine, step by step, how we go through the budget process. We meet with administrators, we meet with supervisors, we estimate revenue, we consider program enhancements, we create a preliminary budget, we give it to the board in January, we start reviewing it one time per month after that. And you will approve the budget in April and the community will vote on it in May, okay? So in order for us, from an expense side of the budget, to roll over, have the same number of programs and the same number of staff, we have built in about a 3% increase in wages across the board. That would be teachers, support staff, and administrators. It's on average, close to that, a little bit less, but just about 3%. We thought we were going to have a 3% to 4% increase in health insurance costs, but this is part of the good news. We self-fund, we had our report from our third-party provider. They provided us with extraordinarily good news and we think that we will only have to increase healthcare premiums by 1% given the, given where we have been over the past year. So this will be one of those places where we'll make up some of the money in the gap. Statewide, it's an 8% to 10% increase for most school districts, so we're doing great on self-funding. We have an increase of about 2% in special education costs and these are mandated through the individual education plans of students based on the programs and services that the committee deems appropriate for them. We have about a 2% increase in BOSI's costs. Remember, as it currently is configured, BOSI's costs will come back to us at 60 cents on a dollar the year after we expend them, okay? If the governor's proposal to consolidate aids keeps BOSI's aids, it's probably close to the death of BOSI's. We will go elsewhere to purchase our shared services. Because without the rebate, the BOSI services are too expensive for us to purchase.
And just to put a point on that, I mean, the, it seems to kind of cross-cut the whole, you know, go together and share costs, I mean, that's the whole purpose of BOSI's.
Right. About 2% in everything else in the budget, utilities, supplies, equipment. There's been a 10% increase in retirement costs. However, this is another good news scenario. We could have budgeted anywhere from 9.5% of payroll to 10.5% of payroll. In the first budget we gave you, we went to the high end because we did not know where the retirement system would end up. It ended up on the low end at 9.5. So this really won't, this is, this 10% number is now inaccurate, correct, Rick? It's going to be a little bit lower than that. So there's another place where we'll recoup some dollars for the gap that we had. Our debt service has been stabilized and you received those reports when we did the building project. On the revenue side, remember, there's three big drivers of revenue in school districts. For us, the number one driver of revenue is property tax for individuals. Secondly, state aid. And third, we get a fair amount of money from sales tax. Rick, how much from sales tax on an annual?
Almost $6 million.
Almost $6 million to our budget. The sales tax in Erie County has increased. It has increased more than what we thought when we were originally putting together the budget. So that's another area where we'll try to recoup funds for the gap. The property tax cap restrains the amount of money that can be raised locally. We have kept the property tax cap increases low over the past 10 years and Clarence has been at or below the level of the tax cap each year it has been in existence. We did try to go over one year, but then we came back at or below. School aid is also capped. School aid is supposed to be tied to personal income. The increase in the last couple of years from school aid has not been enough to balance the budget. It really makes us more dependent on state aid than less dependent on state aid when we cap local property tax revenue. Some assumptions on the revenue side, we went through the expenditure side. Here's some assumptions on the revenue side. It's not 100% official yet and it won't be 100% official until March 1st. But as of today, and this number is going to be very close to the end number, our property tax cap estimate is 2.97%. At 2.97%, we can raise about $1 million and a half dollars. At 2.97 percent, we can raise about $1 million and 1/2 dollars towards the budget for next year. All other revenues will increase by about $1 million. We've put in a 2 percent increase in sales tax. Our local revenues that we get from miscellaneous sources like interest rates, properties that pay in lieu of taxes, miscellaneous income, that's going to remain flat. But there will be about a $500,000 increase with combined school aid plus Medicaid funding when we count on all of the expense-driven aids to be allocated towards the district. So, you put all that together, and the expenses, the revenues do not match the expenses. So, what do we have to do? We're going to have to apply some additional fund balance and make some different expenditure reductions. This is a chart we've used for the past six or seven years, and it shows for each budget year, what was the spending increase and what was the tax levy increase, and were we at or below the cap, and how much fund balance were we using. So, you can see that in every year, we've been at or below the cap since the cap first existed in the 2012-13 school year. The 11-year average is just over 2 percent in spending, just over 2 percent in the tax levy. So, I would be hard-pressed to have any other school district in Erie County that has those numbers over the past 10 years. That's a fiscally conservative budgeting practice. The tax cap, some in the community thinks it's a 2 percent number. It is not a 2 percent number. It's actually a number made up of three categories. The first category is the allowable state growth factor. That can be as high as 2 percent. It is the cost of living increase from one year to the next. When the state calculated it for this year, it turned out to be 1.81 percent. So, that's the number we start with. The last two years, this has been at the maximum of 2 percent. This year, it's a little lower than the maximum. We are allowed to take a growth factor for the number of new properties and number of new commercial and residential properties that have been built in the district. We're doing great. We have much additional new builds, so we can add 1.16 to the estimated percentage increase for that particular factor. Sometimes, you're allowed exclusions for debt service. We really don't qualify for that this year. So, you add those two things together, and our cap number is 2.97 percent. Other districts will have other cap numbers, but they're all going to be someplace in the range of 1.8 to 2, to maybe higher, depending upon the auspices of your particular district. So, what does that translate to right now? Remember, this is not 100 percent official until we completely complete our budget and we hand all the information into the State Aid Department on March 1st. But as it stands right now, our property tax estimate on a 2.97 percent levy increase would raise the tax rate to $14.17 per thousand. So, on $100,000 home, that would be a $27 increase annually. On a $200,000 home, a $54 increase. On a $300,000 home, an $81 increase. If these numbers change at the very end, they will only change very slightly. So, given all of the expenditure and revenue information for the budget, this is normally where we brag a little bit about the school district and talk to the community about our positive program elements. Last year's seniors, great kids, just like these young people who presented tonight, 65 percent of those kids earned Advanced Regents diplomas, 92 percent went to a two- or four-year college. We had graduates of the largest ever from our Academy of Business and Finance, Project Lead the Way. There were over 22,000 hours of community service, and 52 of our graduates, the highest in Western New York, received the seal of biliteracy. Programs, we have a nationally-recognized music program, over 2,300 kids and 30 performing groups. We have reasonable class sizes with a couple of bumps in the road in each one of our elementary schools. There are 60 elective course offerings at the high school, 19 advanced placement, 12 college-level courses. We have a full athletic program with 69 teams and 1,600 participants, and there are 60 extracurricular opportunities at the middle school and the high school. So, when we say we want to maintain the excellence that we have, these are the kind of things that we're talking about. So, where do we stand? We're second as a district overall out of 96 districts in cost-effectiveness in Western New York. And I'd venture to guess that after this year, we will be the number-one cost-effective district. The only district that isn't, that's ahead of us, is Lackawanna, and they're a very small district that gets most of their money from New York State. We're 14th in per-pupil spending out of 431 upstate districts, 5th in administrative efficiency, the second-lowest per-pupil cost in Western New York, the sixth-highest teacher experience in New York, and the second-lowest full-value tax rate in Western New York. We have the third-highest academic ranking of 96 schools, 1st in science, 2nd in math, 9th in social studies, 3rd in English, 1st for our athletic program, and our per-pupil spending is 30 percent lower than the statewide average. So, this tells the story of the Clarence District, of the goals that we had of fiscal responsibility and great programs for kids. This chart just compares our per-pupil spending to similar schools, and similar schools to us would be Williamsville, Orchard Park, East Aurora. Those are the kind of schools we are compared against. So, per-pupil expenditures against similar schools and against all schools, per-pupil for special ed, total per-pupil, we actually outperform in all those areas. Draft number one of the budget that we gave you with a couple of changes for this particular meeting. This year's budget total, 85.6 million. Next year, at the cap level of 2.97 percent, we add about $1.5 million. We use $1 million of state aid, sales tax, some appropriated reserves and appropriated fund balance to bridge that gap, and we end up with a 20, I should say, 2020, 2021 budget of 88.2 million. There's a typo on there, sorry about that. We are also recommending, as we have every year for the past 10 years, a bus purchase. We have a 10- to 12-year replacement cycle for our buses. This year, we only need six new buses, three of the large 72-passenger buses, two of the large buses that have the big compartments in the bottom to carry the kids' stuff, one wheelchair bus, and we should get about $14,000 from trading in some of our old buses.
Is that being tax-neutral?
That is tax-neutral, yes. We take out a three-year borrowing, it's three or five? Five-year borrowing cycle, and as one debt rolls off, another one rolls on, so it's no impact on the levy. So, we decided this year to combine our budget presentations with our regular Board meetings. We did one in January, we're doing our second one tonight. We will do another one on March 9th. There may not be a bunch of new information there, but we will give the Board updates on enrollment, our projections of where we stand, and anything else that you'd like to see additional information on. On April 6th, we're hoping to have the budget adopted. If the state is not finished at that point, we may have to call a special meeting to get you in here. There are guidelines on how close you can be to the actual election. How many days before, Rick?
Right now, with some of the new military ballots and things like that, it's going to be 24 days from the budget.
Once the Board approves the budget, there'll be a public hearing on May 4th, although all of these budget sessions are recorded, they're on our website. We will also take any questions that people have through email. On May 4th, the public hearing will happen. On May 19th, the public budget across New York State will be voted on. So, that's a quick overview of our second draft of where things stand. Any questions from the Board of Ed? Does anybody have any questions? Mike, do you mind if I ask if the community has any? Any questions from the community on budget? Okay. Brendan?
Yeah, just, well, no questions. What was related to that, regarding the priorities going into the budget critical? I know prior results probably don't guarantee the outcome here, but in the past, historically speaking, what kind, where have we seen the numbers settle typically from what the governor puts out?
Yeah.
What the legislator puts out, and then ultimately what the board puts out?
Yeah. From the governor's budget to what we'll call the adopted budget at the end, when they all agree, small increases. We have wish lists from them. We've shared some things with the Board. There hasn't been any public debate on what would happen if we got extra money, but the Board can include that in their deliberations in the future.
Well, if I could just provide my feedback on that, the personnel and the staff, I would like to leave for conversations I've had with the community. I would say one area, I mean, obviously, we've been operating, have operated for years in terms of fiscal responsibility and, you know, program excellence. One area I think where we should change quite frankly is the relationship we've set on the programming and staffing that we're operating on the mental health front. I would encourage the Board to really take this up seriously. It's my understanding that we have, correct me if I'm wrong, 1 and 1/2 social workers and 1 and 1/2 school?
Got one.
One, 1 and 1/2. I was thinking, well, my guess would be...
We have a social worker that we work with through Lancaster that's limited to just a certain percentage of special ed kids who have program work requirements outside of school.
So, this is not acceptable. Quite frankly, I know many of you have worked in schools or have launched with the schools in our, we're all working, you know, with school aid, children in general, I think we're not having, at a minimum, what I'd like to see is my understanding, Lancaster is doing, they have a social worker in every single school. So, again, we're going to prepare ourselves, other districts where the worker is way behind the gap. But without doubt, the fact that you have one social worker whom I know from experience is being pulled in multiple directions. If there's a crisis type situation, which happens probably more often than we would like, that individual with, and/or the counselor is not sick, we have the middle school counselor on early leave, and all the, obviously, other things pop up all the time, you know, if we got kids that are coming to school in crisis and no resources. So, I, just again, something that I would just really encourage will be Mr. Hicks, Dr. Hicks, and the Board to think about seriously, and put this on, like, if we get $3,000 anywhere, I'd like to see people there.
Thanks, Brendan. Not to make excuses, we do have more psychologists than we've ever had. We still are short. Mental health is a huge priority for the Board of Ed. We've heard it from our staff and from our support staff as well. Board members, any comments to Mr. Biddlecombe?
I would just agree that we really need to take a good, hard look at staffing in those areas as well.
Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Hicks. Moving forward on the agenda, Mr. Mancuso, finances?
Sure, we, just want to note a couple of things on the financial report. Is the call to nominations for the BOSI's Board, this is our Board's opportunity to nominate somebody, and the nominations do close March 13th, so you still will have another opportunity at our next Board meeting. There's also a couple of letters for a couple of people who are requesting support for their candidacy. And we also have wanted to bring to your attention, our district treasurer that retired is filling in for us, covering the extra-classroom activity treasurer who left for another position, a 12-month position. Want me to move on to the next one?
Yes, please.
Sure. About a year ago, we asked the Board to set up a repair reserve to start funding the replacement of our turf fields. Turf fields are great, but they do have a life expectancy. While it's difficult to identify the perfect life expectancy, we do know that, you know, there's that 10-year kind of window that we like to look at. So, one of the things that we did is we got a quote from the company that actually installed the turf fields for our project to see how much it would cost to replace them. The quote is there. This does go through the normal process of a building program, so in addition to their quote, we do have to build in all of the architect's fees and all of those engineering things that have to take place. So, we've got an estimate, and again, rough estimate for, you know, eight years from now approximately, of $2.4 million. Along those lines, I'm recommending that we take $300,000 from our unappropriated fund balance and start to build that reserve so that we can fund these down the road. Part of the governor's proposal right now is actually to not allow what we did when we built those turf fields and not allow aid of any type on turf with certain restrictions. But it wouldn't have allowed us to build our turf fields with a full 2/3s aid from New York State. As the project down the road goes forward, it would certainly be contingent on some of this tiering that the governor is proposing for capital projects. So, you know, in a perfect world, we could get our 2/3s back on this down the road, but right now, there's no guarantees.
But there is aid on repairs, like, if we only want a repair, there should be aid.
Yes.
So, just to clarify too, we're talking about why we probably want to consider putting money into the reserve fund, but at this time, we're not necessarily committing that this is what it has to be used for, is that correct? Or are we earmarking it for this particular purpose and only this particular purpose?
It's pretty much earmarked for repairs, and, you know, eight years from now, if it wasn't needed and there was a dire need for a roof repair or something like that, it's a repair reserve. We are wanting to start it because we know that a repair like that down the road is going to be so expensive.
Thank you.
Is this money that we're earmarking, is it going to be used for other things? Could it be used for anything we want it to be used for?
In the repair reserve for repairs.
Yeah, but like, if we didn't take this $300,000 and put it in a repair, could we use it?
No. No, it's part of the unappropriated fund balance that, um, seven or eight...
So, let's say, we can't go out and hire a social worker with that?
No.
Okay.
No.
Mostly because it wouldn't recur. You, these, that money is...
Well, I just think it's important for people to realize that we're putting this money there, but we, like, we have a major mental health crisis, and we, obviously, we just can't take that $300,000 and hire someone, so, I mean, I think the community would need to know we're not just throwing money there.
Let me make sure I understand, because I thought I did up until just a moment ago. So, unappropriated fund balance, you know, we've historically tried to keep the allocation of that under control so that we didn't actually have to rely on that carry-forward on sustained things. And we've used it to fill budget gaps periodically, but we're kind of near that edge of any more, and it kind of limits our ability to be flexible when things fall short. So, the attraction on the, this year, and proposing for the repair fund is really because it's a one-shot, and next year, we could take that $300,000 if we had a crisis and use it somewhere else versus incorporating it into our budget as like a staff line.
One of the items that we have in the budget draft is to increase our fund balance appropriation from $2.2 million to $2.5 million. So, that already will dip into the unappropriated monies. Those unappropriated monies are always there for emergencies and things like that, but also, you know, they do a purpose. When we are going to borrow $27 million for our project, that's the first thing that borrowers or lenders look at is that you're sustaining appropriate balances. So, a $5 million balance that we would have now, taking $300,000 and sliding it to a designated purpose for the repair certainly seems logical. And if we didn't want to fund a repair reserve, no, eight years from now, a community project for $2.4 million would need to be voted on if you wanted to sustain... voted on if you wanted to sustain the fields.
Just also to characterize, I don't think it was mentioned yet, but with regards to New York State guidelines and so forth, this, so we have this money in the savings account, so to speak, that we have flexibility with. When we don't particularly identify it for a specific purpose, it goes into the unappropriated, and then that's calculated as a percentage of our total budget. And the state guidelines is when it arises to be too high, we get dinged, it's, it is a violation, so to speak, based on New York State guidelines.
Yes.
By doing it, something of this nature, and we have a number of different reserves we could potentially put money into and earmark it for dedicated needs, it doesn't diminish the amount of money we have in the savings account, it just identifies where we intend to use it, and it reduces the unidentified percentage, and it's looked more favorably by the state.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I think, just for the community, there, there's really two kinds of fund balance. There's fund balance that we have appropriated as a revenue towards next year's budget, and as Rick said, that's $2.5 million. We have to be careful that that number does not get too high. Then there's unappropriated fund balance, which kind of sits as a cash rainy-day fund.
Thank you.
Last item that I have, New York State put out a requirement for districts that have school resource officers to have a memorandum of understanding. This was initially put out by the state because they had a concern that school resource officers were exercising discipline rights over students, and, and it's not appropriate. Now, we don't have a true school resource officer, we have the special patrol officers for the town of Clarence, and the town of Clarence, through our intermunicipal agreement, have assigned them to our schools for us. That intermunicipal agreement does identify very clearly that they are not allowed to do any disciplinary action. However, our attorney said it's not a bad idea to take those 24 bullet points that New York State recommends for a memorandum and go through the process, set up a committee, which we did, and, um, we came up with, let's say, answers to each of those 24 bullet points. The, uh, committee worked several meetings, face-to-face, and a bunch of virtual meetings going back and forth. The, the last few items in the memorandum are exactly, as I noted, right from the intermunicipal agreement, which is the binding document that we, as a school district, have with the town for the, excuse me, for the special patrol school's resource officers. So this is here for your review, if there's anything that I'm going to like to weigh in on. Otherwise, at some point in time, I would like the board to accept it, and there's actually no state filings on this, it's just that we need to have one internally.
So the action is to, for us to accept the MOU?
That would be what I'd recommend.
Did we have the town look at the MOU as well?
Yes. Yep. And, uh, and, uh, Don Kinney also was part of the committee going through it.
But the actual town attorney saw it, and he's good with it?
Uh, I did talk to the town attorney, I talked to Mr. Casillo.
And you have the officers out at the base well?
Yes.
Are there any questions of Mr. Mancuso? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve items F1, the bill and, scheduled bill and check warrant report? F2, the, the funding of the repair reserve, and for F3, we are, would be accepting the MOU for the special patrol officers? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Mr. Michelle?
For instructional for your approval this evening, we have one request for an unpaid leave of absence, one informational item on a staff assignment. P3 contains the appointments for this month, which has one after-school AAS position at Clarence Center, a list of spring sports coaches, his recommendations from Mr. Lembeck, approval for mentor training, approval for test score training. P4 is the approval for the winter curriculum projects. P5 has presentation compensation, and P6 are, is the list of additions to our teacher sub-list.
Does anybody have any questions on the instructional portion of the agenda? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve P1 to P6? Do I have a second?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, that carries. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional. Uh, P7, we have six resignations this evening. One is for retirement purposes, so we thank Cindy Moist for her 32 years of service to the district. Uh, P8 contains increases in hours to serve our students, two leasings of absence, one extension for an unpaid leave of absence, and P11 has our appointments, our appointments this month. We have five teacher aide positions, three clerical positions, one monitor, and one maintenance mechanic, and the addendum adds one more position, which is the recommendation for an account clerk typus for the high school.
Does anybody have any questions on non-instructional? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve P7 to P12?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Dr. Hicks, special needs?
Uh, there are 17 school-age and 15, or I'm sorry, 14 preschool recommendations here for program and placement changes. After this month, we start getting into annual reviews, so there'll be much larger percentages of kids.
Thank you very much. Any questions on S1 or S2? Could I get a motion to approve S1 and S2?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Board development?
We have the 8,000 section of the board policy manual, which is a very large section with many policies in it, and, uh, we made one additional correction to it that we provided to the board in the Friday update. If you'd like to keep going on this one and wait another month before you approve it, that's completely understandable. This is the second read-through for that particular item.
So seeing as it's on the agenda as informational, and we have not gotten any concrete feedback, would the group be agreeable to providing any feedback prior to next meeting, and will formally act on it then?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, we have some field trips as well. FBLA, Model UN, and then next year, the traditional grade-eight Washington DC and Quebec trips. And the teachers would like them approved early so that they can do some fundraising with the kids for next year's Quebec and Washington DC trip.
Are any questions on B2 to B5? If none, could I get a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Okay, we have our second and final public comment session this evening. If anybody has anything to add, microphones on either end, just state your name and address if you wouldn't mind for the record.
Siobhan Como, 6320 Utley Road, Akron. Coming to you is a handout on the program SPCA Pause for Love. It's a program brought by the SPCA into many organizations, in schools and hospitals in the area, free of charge. We're talking about mental health, it's a great help with mental health. I've listed on here, there's 500 teams throughout the area, working in schools, hospitals, libraries, college campuses. All animals are behaviorally tested to be safe in those environments. All volunteers are fully insured while working on the premises. They, we currently go to more than 30 schools in Western New York, and I'm bringing this to you because my dog Hank, he's a golden retriever, and I are certified. So we've begun working, Dr. Hicks is laughing, we've begun working in other schools, and as you know, I'm pretty involved in Clarence and love to volunteer my time here, so I'd far rather bring these resources to Clarence than to continue to go to Amherst and other districts that I've been volunteering in. I know there's always concerns about bringing an animal into the building, but I've kind of talked to a couple of principals and felt out, um, people who are willing to maybe have it and start on a very small basis. I've talked to Kevin in the support center, obviously, he has some uses, he could use them for. A lot of the volunteer we've done so far have been in special education classrooms, self-nutained classrooms, where we go in and work with the children. A lot of them are in the primary buildings where we go in and we have the children read to us. Also, for any student, like, in crisis or comes for some kind of counseling or may need something during the week to help them behaviorally, the dog, it's on here about how just petting a dog can reduce blood pressure and stress. Another really great thing they're trying to bring into schools that maybe do at colleges all the time is bringing the animals in during exam periods. So when there's a high stress with pupil exams and things like that going on, you can bring the, um, I'll say animals, I say dog, but there's birds and cats and rabbits, can come in and students can just have them in, like, in one area, one classroom, students can go and visit them just to have a anxiety release. And they also, so that's the college thing, oh, and I also, a new volunteer thing that just came up last week was, uh, I think it was Lancaster was actually using the dogs on a staff development day to bring in for the teachers, and there's also been a lot of businesses locally, there was a big one at NYSIG, I think, two weeks ago, where they brought the dogs in for the workers. So they're being used really all over the board, but I just would love if you would review the information I've left. I did say kind of what I thought maybe where we could start in Clarence, if anyone is willing to, um, which would be just talking to the building principals and seeing who might be willing to have an animal on the premises, um, work with Kevin Moore to see where he might see it useful, and that it can be started very small. I mean, you can have one special ed classroom in the building, one person who wants one, and kind of go from there and see how it went. Because I know that there's always concerns about allergies and things like that, but they've said that, um, if you put them in a certain area where all the people wouldn't be exposed, then it would be safer for allergies. And I will say, at Amherst right now, middle school, there's a community service project where their goal is to expose every student in the building to a therapy dog. So that's really cool. We literally go stand in the gymnasium for half an hour a week, and they, they shuffle kids in and out, and they just get the experience of, of meeting one. So it's a very broad program, I think it can be used in many different ways, it's completely free, so I think that's a huge, um, asset. I don't know if you've heard about Williamsville, but they actually use the program and now have it, like, a board policy about it, where teachers actually bring some of their dogs now, and they've really implemented it throughout their district, so it's, it's everywhere but here, so, um, do you have any questions? No? Well, I did put the number on here for Debbie Brown, she's the one who runs the program, she said she'd be, or had the emails on here. She said she'd be happy to answer any of your questions or give any more information if anyone would like it.
Thank you, appreciate you sharing the information with us.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Burden, I'm a speech pathologist at Harris Health. I have a question about the budget. You spoke about trying to minimize the gap, and there was going to be some reduction in non-personnel-type expenses. If you can just, maybe I missed it, but if you could just give me some examples of what that might look like?
If you can wait until March, we're going to give you the examples then.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you. All right, in our packet, we have a schedule of upcoming meetings. As mentioned in the budget presentation, our next regularly-scheduled board meeting is on March 9th, that will be here in the high school lecture hall at 7:00 PM. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the negotiations with the CSEA. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Thank you, everyone, good night.